Good evening, everyone. We're welcoming this special town meeting on the last of the staff. I want to give this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And thank you. The first item of business tonight is to elect a moderator for this meeting. Do you hear a nomination from?
Link Cooper.
Any other places of nominations? Do you hear a second to that?
Sorry, got it.
Are there any other nominations for first for first elect? No. Any other nominations for moderator? You'll get that opportunity in a little while, not tonight. Any other nominations for moderator? We'll ask the third time because that's our custom. Any other nominations for moderator? Hearing none, I will assume the responsibility for moderator of this meeting. At this time, I'm going to introduce Jack Johnson, who is one of our members of the Board of selection, and Heather George, Tom Clark will read the call for the meeting.
Legal notice, Town of Sterling warning a special town meeting. Notice and warning is hereby given to the legal voters of the Town of Sterling and those property owners qualified to vote in town meetings pursuant to section seven dash six of the Connecticut General Statute that a special town meeting will be commenced on Thursday, October 16th, 2025 at 7:00 PM in conference room number 15 of the Sterling Town Hall, 1183 Plainfield Pike, Omeed, Connecticut, to consider and act upon the following questions. Shall the town approve the creation of the road resurfacing capital account that would be used specifically for the purpose of resurfacing roads and to be funded from the general fund balance? And two, shall the town approve the following amounts in capital transfers from the general fund balance? A, 50,000 to the revaluation capital account. B, 500,000 to the facilities maintenance capital account. C, 100,000 to the equipment capital account. D, 200,000 to the buses and vans capital account. E, 75,000 to the IT hardware capital account. F, 500,000 to the road resurfacing capital account. Copies of all of the proposed items referenced in above are available for review on the town's website and at the Sterling Town Hall Town House office during normal business hours. Sterling Board of Selectmen, Nick Cooper for selection, David W. Shewish for selection, Chad Johnson for selection.
Thank you, Heather. You've heard the call to the meeting. The first question is, shall the town approve the creation of a road resurfacing account, capital account, that would be used specifically for the purposes of resurfacing roads and to be funded from the general fund balance? Do you hear a motion to approve? Motion is made to approve. Do you hear a second there? Motion is made. This motion is seconded. General discussion of that motion. If you can't ask a question, by all means do. I'm going to ask you to stand, clearly give your name and street address for the benefit of the record.
Steve Thompson, 104 Plainfield Pike. Can you just explain what's in the general fund now? How much is being taken out of the overall making from that? And then is the, also, what's the advantage of creating this capital account?
I will, I will, uh, thank you, Steve. I appreciate that question. I'll give you the answer to the first part of it, the financial part of it, and Bob Salisbury, the Chairman of the Board of Finance, is going to give you an answer for the rest of it, okay? The, the fund balance of the general fund, they're both the very same thing, is the bank account for the town, simply put. We have the total, as of June 30th, the total amount in the fund balance was $5,264,407.39. We are, one more time, $5,264,407.39. That, as of June 30th, that's what was in the general fund balance. Of that money, the State Office of Management Policy and Management doesn't demand, they don't mandate, but they strongly suggest that a town takes 15% of the annual budget. In our case, that's a $12 million budget. $3 million for the general government budget, that would be the selectmen's budget. $9 million for the school, together that makes $12 million. We're required, or we're strongly suggested, to keep that 15% aside in a separate account that is untouchable until we run into a catastrophic situation where we don't have any money and the town has to run for a couple of months. They figured on two months' running ability. That's the money. The, uh, the rest of that fund balance is unencumbered money, unaccounted-for money, money that can be spent through permission of the selectmen, the Board of Finance, and a town meeting. That's what we're doing here tonight. We're actually spending some money. We're, uh, we're, we're trying to get your approval to spend money. The bottom line of the vote, obviously. So that's the fund balance. That, the, and the creation of this account is intended to, we don't have a capital account right now for road resurfacing. We have six other accounts, and I can list them off for you. You have six capital accounts, will be the ones that were selected in the, mentioned in the call. Reevaluation account, just a little background on that. We used to do our own reevaluation every by year. We don't do that anymore. We have a connection with, with, um, NICOD. They hire the company to do the reevaluation for us. We don't have to hire a company to do that. They do that. We have to pay them a certain price. And what we do is we pay them annually to have, they keep our money for five years and it's enough money for them to do that. That is currently, that is funded by the, by the, the town budget. Every year, we take a certain amount of money from our budget and put it into that account. The same is true of the facilities maintenance account. That's the major maintenance on a building like this. An example of that, the expenditure on that would be the roof on this building. The, uh, the generator that we had to put in, once the X-Fax system was put in, we needed a new generator. Those two things were funded. There's several other things that have been funded from that account, but that's what it's for, the general facilities maintenance account. That again, is funded from the budget currently. The equipment capital account is basically, if we had to replace one of our trucks, had to replace the backup, that's what that account is about. And again, that money is put in from the general budget. Second would be buses and cap, and vans capital account. Every year, we buy a new bus. Sometimes, if we have enough money, we buy a bus and a van. That all comes out of that. But again, that money gets put into that account from the budget currently. That's what we're trying, we think about changing. The IT capital hardware account, we have accomplice computers in this building. We have very expensive setup in the other end of the building for a, it's called a, uh, portable, very expensive equipment. That stuff needs to be replaced from time to time. That's what that account is all about. So that would be the existing account. This would be just one more capital account. The idea being that would be money designated just for this purpose, couldn't be spent on anything else, as is the case with all these capital accounts, can only be spent on the, on the, on the subject matter that they refer to. In other words, you can't pay bills, you can't pay salaries out of any of these accounts. This is a, an account set up just for that purpose. The capital account that we're hoping to create will give us a balance in there that they could use, that the, uh, the selectmen can go ahead and note they have a certain amount of money and wouldn't be scrambling around every year to try to find enough money to resurface roads. Will Bob take it from here?
Okay.
Just give your name, Bob.
Bob Salisbury, 379 Calvin Branch Road. Then the idea about doing this kind of thing came home to rest when, a few years ago, a budget didn't pass and we didn't have the funds to finish some roads that needed to be done. And so that was quite the irony, that we had a lot of money in the surplus fund, but we weren't prepared to swing around and get the roads done. It wasn't planned ahead. So it was a little bit awkward. And the state of Connecticut does advise the 15% holdback so that we, we can accommodate calamitous situations and stuff. But they also advise towns to develop a management plan for all the, the fund balance in general. So we don't just strike at it willy-nilly, you know, in an emergency or something like that. So we can, we can make it part of the bigger picture of how the town manages its money. So we can do it prudently, wisely, and effectively so that we're using money that you've already paid and has been accruing interest so that we don't come at you with a mill rate interest, mill rate increase, to do the work that's really already been paid for. So we'd like to, like to use that money and put it to work with, and by developing a plan to maintain our balance sensibly and not overstretch beyond that 15%. We want to experiment with this idea of getting something set up, getting money put into these accounts, watching what happens, how the, how the budget develops because we've done these kinds of transfers already, and then evaluate it. And then the, the Board of Finance, part of it with, with the policy would be to review this kind of action, see if it was successful, see if it worked right, we're still solvent. Right now, our fund balance is pushing over 40%, and we're really supposed to hold back about 15. So it makes sense. We kind of use your money, you've already given this, us to us, to, to make it work for us and not have to keep raising the mill rate every year to make things happen. So we will review and evaluate and, and begin, and understand it better to write up a policy to manage the funds for the future. So right now, we're, we're starting it. We're, we're getting it in place so that we can have something to look at and, and decide what to do in the future. So by having this big picture, all developed with funds populated with money in the beginning of the budget cycle, then the treasurer, the selectmen, and everything say, okay, we've got this, this is, and, and just to be clear, the sources for this particular fund that we're making aren't flexible, as they all are. The sources could be from, um, uh, the annual budget appropriations. If, if indeed our, our, our general fund balance moves to a place where we don't want to take money from it, we will have to appropriate, we will have to tax more. So we can use that, that money. Transfers from other municipal accounts, as approved by the Board of Finance and the town, and, and the town meeting. And any other funds legally designed for this purpose. So we have flexibility to populate these funds. And, and that way, it gives the planners some balance, some, some, something to observe so they can make some decisions ahead of time, not the last minute. So basically, that's kind of why we're getting started with this. So we can have a, a better planned future with the fund balance.
Thank you, Bob. Steve, did that help answer your question?
Yeah, it does.
One more question, I think.
Go ahead.
Why do you think of that question? Let me just read you what the, what the ordinance would actually say, okay? This has been drawn up by the treasurer. It's been approved by the, the attorney. So let me just read you the, the whole content of this ordinance so you'll get, maybe it'll give you a little better picture. The purpose, section one, the purpose, is, this is an ordinance establishing a capital account for road resurfaces. Section one, purpose. The purpose of this ordinance is to establish a dedicated capital account within the Town of Sterling's financial system for the purpose of funding road resurfacing projects, thereby ensuring long-term infrastructure integrity and prudent financial fiscal planning. The account will be overseen by the Sterling Board of Finance. That is something we want to always keep in mind, that they, before it ever gets here to a town meeting, they have, they, it doesn't get here until the Board of Finance approves any transaction involving this. Section two, establishment of a capital account. This is hereby established, there is hereby established a capital account titled the Road Resurfacing Capital Account, here and after the account, within the Town of Sterling's municipal fund structure. Section three, use of funds. The funds deposited in the road resurfacing capital account shall be used exclusively for the following purposes: planning, engineering, resurfacing, or repaving of existing public roads within the Town of Sterling, or costs of materials, labor, and equipment directly related to the resurfacing work. Section four, funding sources. Funding for the road resurfacing capital account may include, but are not limited to, annual budget appropriations approved by town meetings, what Bob just referred to, transfers from other municipal accounts, which is what we're talking about already tonight, as approved by the Board of Finance and town meeting, any other legally, any other funds legally designated for this purpose. Section five, management and oversight. The Sterling Board of Finance shall have full oversight authority over the road resurfacing capital account, including reviewing and approving all expenditures from the account, recommending annual fund levels during the town budget process. And thirdly, entering, excuse me, ensuring that all use of these funds complies with the spoken purpose outlined in this ordinance. No funds shall be expended from the account will require approval from the Board of Finance. The town treasurer shall be responsible for the investment and management of the account, subject to direction of the Board of Finance. In section six, amendment and dissolution. This ordinance may be amended or appealed by a majority vote of a duly-called town meeting. Upon dissolution of the account, any remaining funds shall revert to the town's general fund unless otherwise directed by the vote of the town meeting. The effective date will be 15 days after this is passed. That is the way the ordinance will read. And it pretty much comes, it does cover everything we talked about. Are there any other questions?
Yes, Peter.
Just to, people row, word upon row. Just to make clarification, uh, on the previous meetings we had with Board of Finance, you said you had 5.2 roughly million dollars on unassigned funds.
Not outside, no, total.
Oh, is that the total?
That's the total.
What part of that was unassigned?
$1,755,000.
All right, so we have a bracket.
180, 370.
$330,000 left in that unassigned fund.
Right.
The rest is assigned under the budget, is that correct? No, the rest of the 5.2.
The unassigned fund balance, after that 15% is removed, is $3,509,000, 300, $3,509,225.59.
That was left.
That was left, once the 15% is taken out of the fund balance. The fund balance starts at 52, 5.2 million. You take out 1.775, and you come down to 3.5.
But you, you just stated that the total that we're allowed to take out of the 15%, total budget.
No less than.
Excuse me?
We have, we have to, we have to, we are suggested, I can't say mandated because we're not.
Well, we have, we've never done any less than 15%. It's 12 to 15% from what I looked at.
Right.
But that comes out to like 1.6 million dollars. So why do we have that much money left over on unassigned funds?
The 15% comes out to 1.755.
That's what's left on unassigned.
No, that's what's being.
The total, the total, as of June 30th, 5,264,407.38. The 15% of a $12 million budget, that's not quite 12 million, it's roughly 12. Is $1,755,181.70, okay? Subtract that from 50, 5.2 million, and you come up with $3,509,225.69.
An unassigned fund.
An unassigned fund.
But that's still more than the 15% we're allowed.
Of course. It's closer to 40%.
Like Bob said, the total fund balance is over, is close to 40% of our budget. We're only taking 15% and putting it aside.
We're just restricting the spending of that 15% so that we have an emergency cushion. And it also helps with your bond rating if you want to borrow money, have that in reserve. What we have in Sterling is far beyond the 15%. So we want to deal with that surplus prudently and sensibly so that we don't keep taxing further and further into the limit.
I agree with you. So, so, so we're going beyond the 15% by 40%, basically, is what you're saying.
Already there.
We're already there. $3 million unassigned. And only 1.7 is 15% of the total budget.
Correct.
We're still going to have more over the 50%.
So even, this might clear it up a little bit. Even after we accomplish everything we intend to do with it, we will still have an unassigned capital, um, what?
After the capital transfers.
After the capital transfer, $3,839,000.
And that's not including the 15%, Bob?
No. 15% is sacred, that just never gets out of it. So how, I was on the Board of Finance about 10 years prior to being on board of selectmen, and that money has always been just absolutely untouchable. Oops, no one's able to move.
I mean, the general fund balance unassigned after capital, after the capital transfers is, uh, $2,802,250, okay? That is excess of the 15. If you, if you push the 15 back in, our total cushion, if you may, is $3,800, almost $4 million still in the balance.
Okay. I mean, I, I, I'm not saying it's bad, it's just, it's good that we do have that extra, extra money. But it's got, like you say, it's got to be controlled in such a way that.
And the way, and the, excuse me, Peter, the plan that Bob has come up with in order to control it, is one of, we're, we're borrowing some of it from other towns because other towns have the very same problem. Some do, some wish they did, others don't. But he has a plan, I think it's from Brooklyn, you read to us last night, that, it describes in detail how they draw down that, that fund balance responsibly to a point where they can, they're comfortable with what they have left. But they also, and we would do the same thing.
Require.
We would require that. But when we come to the budget meeting, with the, the annual meeting for the budget in June or whatever, let's hope it's earlier than June, there will be the school budget voted on, there'll be the town budget voted on, there'll be the local capital improvement budget, which is what we do now. But with this, if we pass this tonight, there will be a fourth budget, which will be the capital budget. It'll take in all of these accounts so that everyone can see the, the, the status of every one of those budgets. And you'd be taking in the, but before that, the Board of Finance would have to go for all of them to make sure these levels are where they should be.
And that way, the budget-making people and the people of the town will have a clearer picture of where the money's coming from and where it's going at the budget time they're voting. And so we don't have to run around, get another town meeting to fill up a shortfall for this particular fund or that particular fund. The big picture is known right away. That's our purpose.
Are there any other questions? On behalf of the field, Kim.
Is there, uh, is the process of these, of these accounts being overseen by the Board of Finance any different?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Yeah. Is the process of the overseeing of the accounts going to be any different than what's happening now? Does the Board of Finance now?
Essentially, no. Essentially, no. It will have to be, in order, if, in order to get money from this, if this account is created, just as it is with the other existing ones, it usually starts with the Board of Selectmen. You need a project done of some kind. We present it to the Board of Finance. We, we have, first of all, the Board of Selectmen agree this should be done. We send it to the Board of Finance and make an, make a question to them, would you approve this for us? If they agree, it comes back to the Board of Selectmen, and then we set a town meeting date. So the process is not going to change at all. It's just that you're going to have dedicated funds that are not dedicated now. There's been quite a lot of talk in the last several years about the fact that we've had, at times, we've had roads that were not in good condition. We still have some roads that are not in good condition. But people saying, why can't, why are we sitting on this large sum of money in a fund balance? When we have roads, we could be spending it on roads. This account creates a fund just for that purpose, and it will be reevaluated at every budget cycle. So it's not a matter of drawing it down to a point where it's going to be unsafe.
And there's no penalizing us from any funds that we might get from the state for our roads?
We still, can, we still do get funds from the town.
We have a kind of, uh, set aside.
This, this won't, this won't change what we get from the state. We get LoSiP money, which stands for Local Capital Improvement Money. Back into use for anything, by the way. It's just traditionally a fudged on roads. We also get a road, we get a fund that gives us money, it's called LOPA, Town Aid to Road. I always thought that was kind of clever. T-A-R, tar, road, anyway, whatever. Anyway, that, we get, that, that money comes every year as well. And, uh, so that money would be from the state, which we do use on a regular basis. Just be, if we were to put the $500,000 in this capital account that we're trying to create, that doesn't mean we need to spend every bit of it every year. We don't intend to spend it. The two accounts that I just mentioned from the state, this year came to about $250,000. We might not, if that were the case, next year when you do roads, you might not take but half of this $500,000. You might be able to get a little just 200 instead of 500. It's just that this is a starting point, and it will be reevaluated every year. And if you thought you could bring it up or needed to bring it up, it's all done based on history. Okay, we only spent this much this year, we don't need to spend that much next year. Then that, all those subjects can be talked about in detail at the budget process.
The other trip point where people are represented is that even though we have the money in the budget, if any, any project has cost more than $20,000, we have to have a town meeting to approve it.
Right.
So there's many trip points in where the people can give their, their approval or disapproval to it over the time, over the period.
You're going to still have the same control over it that you have now. It's just this particular fund we're talking about will be dedicated just for that purpose. Are there any other questions, Steve? Did you have any?
Yeah, how long have we had? $5 million sitting in the show.
Oh, that's, that's a question I'm afraid I can't answer that question. I don't know.
And do we accrue interest? How much interest can we get on that a year?
How much interest do we get?
Yeah. Do we know that?
The treasurer's not here, she could answer that off the top of her head.
It's in the, in the vicinity of 300 and something.
Something like that, around $300,000 or something a year.
So you figure every year.
Almost $1 million.
Occasionally, we spend less money in our budget than we expected, and sometimes we spend the same amount that we expect. But we, the income is higher than we expect. That all contributes to this, this, this figure. And, because I asked that request on the purpose 20, how is it we have created this? And she says, just, sometimes the revenue's coming from a variety of sources. We take in money from a variety of places. The state comes, gives us, the, the list is amazing. It's not all a lot of money, but total, it adds up. And some of that money, we don't have to spend, so it goes in instead, goes into that fund.
A big windfall a few years ago was when the town hired a legal firm to collect taxes. And so a lot of that taxes kind of flowed into the general, into the grand list, the general fund. But then, of course, when that rises, then you have more to invest. The interest on that rises, so it compounds itself. So it didn't take too long just from that windfall to bump it up.
That seems kind of a good thing to me, though. You've got all this money sitting there, you know, it's, it's like a, it's free money. We have $300,000 a year.
Well.
Just a bunch of money sitting there.
Well, as, as the interest rises, yeah, as the interest rises, the interest comes in, it's, it's good.
So that's going to start diminishing our worst time of life.
Not necessarily, you know, maybe a little at first, but as we get used to how much we're going to spend every year, I mean, we don't have to transfer as much anymore. And we, we'll settle in on kind of an average where we will glean interest, but we'll also not have to raise taxes to pay for the roads. You know, we got to, we want to employ it, so we're getting something out of it.
Yes, Stephen.
Stephen, you have some, please, you'll pick. Am I correct that when the budget comes out, you'll still be putting amounts into those capital accounts? Or just stay at 500,000?
That's the second half of our meeting.
Okay.
But thank you for asking, but it's just, I didn't want to get into it because it's just one use of the water just a little bit. At the moment, we're only talking about the capital account we're trying to create with putting $500,000 from the fund balance in it as a starting point, if you will. Any other questions about this? Yes, one? Yeah. I'm looking here.
No, I just want to make a comment. I want to thank you very much for the transparency, your transparency, and the people, the questions that you've asked. It brought out a lot of transparency, what I believe it. And I'm just hoping that what we've said tonight has, is, is not set in stone, but it, it, it's transparent throughout the rest of the year and the budget time.
All right? Thank you for those comments. No problem. Yes, Neil.
Uh, the advantage of this is that we're going to use money that's already been taxed, so it's not going to affect, at least that part of it won't affect our future budget, and it'll give us, in the town, a dedicated source of funds for these various projects, in this case, the, you know, road resurfacing. And again, you know, we have the controls, you know, the Board of Selectmen has to approve it, then it goes to the Board of Finance, then it has to go to a town meeting. It's over $20,000. So, you know, there's no, as Pete just said, there's, you know, there's transparency, there's no, you know, faulty. You know, there's no, as Pete just said, there's, you know, there's transparency, there's no, you know, phony baloney going on. Uh, you know, people are gonna be aware of, you know, uh, what's going on and, you know, where's the money's being spent. Plus, uh, you know, at, at some future date, you know, if the five hundred thousand, let's say, for the road servicing account, you know, if we do end up doing a couple of roads, uh, in a couple of years, we may have to, uh, pull you up some more money. Again, that may come out of the fund balance, or it may come from the LoSiP or the T A R money, depending on, you know, what comes in. So, uh, it gives us a dedicated funding source instead, we don't, we can, like as Bob had said, we can avoid, you know, raising taxes if at all possible. Because that's the third rail in Sterling.
Thank you, Neil.
I have a general question.
Yes, you're on.
Just to know what a road cost. I'm around Wicked Springs Light Road. My road was done today. Uh, how much?
Hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred thousand.
That's half a mile, that's overlaying. There was no grinding.
It's a beautiful road.
It is a beautiful, Spring Light Road we paved today, focus for the record. I take it for a reason?
I walk over there all.
Good for you. Anyway, but that road is, in rough numbers, might have been ninety-seven, ninety-eight, but we'll say a hundred thousand dollars for the, in general terms. That's half a mile of road, twenty-two feet wide.
Thank you.
That's, and that's, that's, that's a material that is compressed to one and a half inch, it just starts at two and a half. By the time the road goes over, they press it down to one and a half, so there's actually one and a half inches of compressed asphalt on that road that wasn't there last night. But it's just, it's a beautiful job right now. We have to hope that it holds up for a while, but, um, it, I'm just glad you get it done, but that, that's what it costs.
Okay.
That's with no milling, that is just overlay, strictly overlay. Probably you could add, let's say, at least a hundred, it might be, it's a little more by the time you do the cut the keyways in at the road. Because when you add a run, you put a new road up against an old road. You have to cut the keyway, you do saw the keyways then.
Yes.
And the driveways.
They cut the keyways, right?
Right, but that's an additional cost. Yeah, that, that has to be done before the paving, so if you add that all together, let's say a hundred and ten will be safer probably, but the paving itself is a hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you, gives me a good idea of what we're gonna go on.
Any other questions?
Well, I just, I just wanted to mention that we focus on the roads, other things need to be done too. But the, the, the struggle is to get the roads done right. Because number one, it's a safety issue, all our kids that go to school have to be on buses, that, that use our town roads. And every person in town uses the roads. It isn't like some strange project that only a couple of people in town benefit. It's everybody that needs to use the roads. So we want to make sure that there's money for them.
Are we ready to take a vote on this, folks? Or do you have any more questions? I mean, what happened, any questions if we do? All in favor of approving this motion to create the road resurfacing account? What's that? We had a motion already.
To move the question to the.
Oh, excuse me, my mistake, I forget that. I need a motion to move the question to the vote. Do I use, I use seconded that?
Seconded.
Leonard? All in favor of moving the question to the vote? All right, all votes? Thank you, now we can vote.
Okay.
All in favor of approving this motion to, to approve the creation of a road resurfacing account? And you know all the details we certainly discussed at all. All in favor? Pretty many, huh? All opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, now we're gonna move on to question two. Shall the town approve the following accounts, amounts, excuse me.
One way down there.
And capital transfers from the general fund balance. So as I said earlier, the six existing capital accounts are now funded currently with money from the budget. That's untaxed money, that's just money that we have to put into these accounts to keep them viable. If we were to choose this method to do it, we wouldn't be doing that anymore. These accounts would be funded from the fund balance, just like this new account we just created is done from the fund balance. And those numbers are the ones that Heather read earlier. We would put in fifty thousand dollars to the revaluation account. Five hundred thousand dollars to the facilities maintenance account. One hundred thousand dollars to the equipment capital fund account. Two hundred thousand dollars to the buses and vans capital account. Seventy-five thousand dollars to the IT hardware capital account, and we just approved putting in five hundred thousand dollars into the road resurfacing account. What that's going to do is, if those six accounts are funded through the fund balance and not the budget. That means when you create the budget, you don't have to put money in, that, that money doesn't have to go in there. This year alone, we put in a fund to fund those six accounts. We took two hundred thousand dollars, spread it over all those six accounts. That was money that had to come, had to go as part of the budget. If we do it from the fund balance, you won't be doing that. You won't be taking it out of the town budget, that, that money will be funded from the fund balance. So I make myself understood on that, is, anybody got a general idea what I'm talking about? Basically, right off the bat, if you did this, you would save that two hundred thousand dollars that we had to put into this year's budget. And you could use it for something else, possibly reduce these taxes.
But at some point, you're gonna, you probably will have to add it back into the budget. Like, why not continue like even, you know, twenty-five thousand?
Okay, well, let's, let's do it the correct way, that's, that's definitely, you can ask that question in a minute. What I'm gonna ask, do we have, do I hear a motion to approve this, not this question? Motion made and seconded to approve this question. Now you can go ahead and ask your question.
Who's the first?
And then, Bob and Neil, Neil.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Stephen.
So I understand setting it up and taking the money out of the fund balance. Why wouldn't you still continue a budget time to still be contributing at least some to those accounts? Because at some point, you're gonna use them, that, that money's gonna go down, you know what I mean? Like, it, you should still be adding to it.
You might be at certain times, but you wouldn't necessarily have to automatically figure, I've got to add a hundred thousand dollars to this account from the budget. You might, in certain years, you might, but you wouldn't have to do that every year. These accounts are not gonna go down, they're, this one will go down the quickest.
The roads.
We, well, two, two of them, be the roads.
And the buses.
Buses cost roughly a hundred and forty thousand dollars these days. It could be in three or four years, that could be a hundred and fifty thousand, or maybe next year, who knows? But.
I mean, I don't know if they're making way.
Right, Kim?
That's a good point. But that, that's why.
Instead of two hundred thousand, it's twenty-five thousand.
We have to review, and this is our experiment to get it started. And then we, then what you're saying is true. Eventually, we're not gonna have that big surplus, we're gonna have, we want to have it like a, a shock absorber, so we don't have to go radically in any different direction. Or spending or taxing, we can do it in moderation because, you know, we have this huge balance to deal with.
Right. The people who make up the, the budget, usually, uh, the treasurer, the board of selectmen, and the school board makes up their own. We'll, we'll leave them out of the picture because this is a totally separate situation. But the, let's say the board of selectmen gets into that situation, they're gonna have all these figures, and they're gonna say, you know, this year, we really do need to put some money into that account. Because it's just not, you know, we, we just need to supplement it that way. But it's just, it won't be automatic, as it is now, it was automatic. If we can save, if you can save two hundred thousand dollars on a given year, we're not, we're not having to take that money and putting it into these accounts. Because you know they might be funded some other way. I mean, that's, that's why the source is about three quarters of a mil.
The source of the funding is flexible, we can do it from the budget, from other accounts, or from the, the general.
It just seems more burdened to my lay brain that, um, if you were just contributing, obviously not the two hundred thousand, because you already have these amounts in there, but, you know, say twenty or thirty thousand to continually add to it so that you're not having, oh, this year we need the two hundred thousand, you know? So it's continually growing without burdening, causing excess money.
And that kind of thinking can be brought up to the selectmen prior to the budget, you know, transfer, the budget process. If you feel that's what should be done, you can certainly bring that up and then say, you know, this is what I think should happen when you get to the budget.
So we, we need to ascertain, what is a comfortable balance for that particular budget? And how can we fund it sensibly? We can mix and match, and, and so we can answer that question as we review it.
And if you want to add from the general fund, yeah. Do you want to do that, or, or do you just?
No, I think that would be part of the budget process, that would be entered up to the selectmen that they use it or not. The.
The issue is, they don't actually transfer the funds you need to town.
What's that?
Right, to transfer the funds from the general, from the fund balance.
From the fund balance, yes.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Yes, but I mean, if it came from, if it was not the budget process, you would have to a little about meeting for that. Neil brought up a point about the fact that any money that's in the fund balance now. And we just taken five hundred thousand dollars, Michael, we've taken five hundred thousand dollars out of it. That's money that's already taxed. The money that we make a budget with is untaxed money. So we're trying to use up, use the money that's untaxed, that's already been taxed. You already paid the bill on that one. So we can use that money productively, prudently, responsibly. Any other questions for, on this subject? I'm happy to answer them, or at least attempt to. Going to ask for a motion to move the question? Motion made, Neil made a motion to move the question, can he second it? All in favor of moving the question to a vote? All opposed? The vote is then, shall, I'll read the, I'll read the second, read the whole, uh, proposal. Shall the town approve the following amounts in capital transfers from the general fund balance? Fifty thousand dollars through revaluation, five hundred thousand to facilities maintenance, hundred thousand dollars to equipment capital account. Two hundred thousand dollars to the buses and vans, seventy-five thousand dollars to the IT hardware account. The, uh, that's the question, all in favor? All opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Just before we leave, just for the, just so you'll know what that, um, the capital need, facilities maintenance account. Several years ago, ten years ago, perhaps, maybe even longer. We had a sizable fund balance. Maybe not this, this size, but it was a sizable fund balance. And the governor of Connecticut at the time, I don't know what, I don't know his name, but anyway, he made it sound as though this state legislature was seriously thinking of hitting up the towns that had a sizable fund balance to help the state go. And made it sound as though it was a real thing. So to avoid, to get ahead of that, our Board of Finance, under the direction of David Shippey. Got a, we passed, we took a million dollars out of that fund balance and created this facilities maintenance account. Which was basically intended to use any major projects on any of our town buildings. The school, the town hall, the incubator building, or the garage. Basically, just so that that was money they couldn't touch. Well, it turns out they didn't do it, but they had us pretty well scared that they were going to do it. So that was the reason that account was started in the first place. So out of that account, we have, can't say that, that the HVAC system was done with federal money. But we put a new roof on this school, we put a new roof on the garage, we put a generator up there, I pointed because that was just up there somewhere. Um, because the one that was here was no longer big enough to handle that HVAC system, had to put a new generator in. Almost a different cost, generator and the, and the roof, almost two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars apiece, that all came out of this fund. We put repairs to the incubator building, we've done a lot of other work too, there's been work done at the school with that money. So that's how that was created in the first place, and we have whittled it down. So this is gonna be a huge shock in the arm to have five hundred thousand dollars put into that account. Again, these things are all going to be monitored by the Board of Finance. We've made it, we've done our business, and I thank you, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn. Can Patty want to adjourn, Pete for the second? We are adjourned, thank you. Thank you for having her.
I can't get my brush to work.